This is the second time I've seen Mr. Bowman, the real lawyer in the courthouse today. I know, I know, and I saw him, I said it was nice to see a good, a real lawyer in the courthouse.
I pretend to be a golfer Saturday. Twenty odds it smells.
How you doing?
Mother's that's not good.
Good evening, Mayor. Are you on a console?
Good.
And I believe it.
Oh, he probably told me.
Yeah. Yes, so.
Yeah.
When I get back on the.
I'll be back.
Sure.
No, I said you're like, um, four.
Okay. Okay. The country, the country, you know, promotes.
Oh, no, it's.
Yeah. Back of the.
It's part of Kansas. I want to.
We all ready to go?
And then there's one.
I will call this meeting of the city of Jefferson City Council Budget Committee to a order. Mrs. Donaldson, would you call the role, please?
Pollers?
Present.
Deacon? Hensley?
Present.
Lester?
Here.
Mealy?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Wiseman?
Present.
Wright?
Present.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everyone for making time to be here this evening. I think this will be a really valuable, uh, meeting, uh, and, and sort of standard to hopefully set for the future, uh, and how we, uh, kick off going into a budget preparation process, uh, for the city. Throughout the course of this discussion, the goal is to, you know, set up, uh, an organized, streamlined, open means of communication between the council and staff. And a, you know, so from the council perspective, a sharing of priorities and perspectives, um, in terms of what we, what each of us individually hopes to see. And see prioritized in the budget and from staff's perspective, um, sharing of thoughts and then asking the questions and seeking direction. In any area that they might have questions on or, uh, where they would like more input from council. Again, it's a sharing of perspectives and, uh, and answering the questions and really basically everybody getting on the same page. It is not designed this evening to be a deep dive debate into any particular issue. That will come over the course of the summer. So let's, let's try to, if we can, avoid sort of going down those paths. Uh, but I think otherwise there is plenty to discuss, uh, over the course of the next, uh, eight to nine minutes or so. If we choose to, to use all of those. Uh, so under the topic of committee and staff, uh, budget planning discussion, which is fairly broad. I would first like to ask, uh, City Administrator Chief Schofield, uh, to sort of give us an introduction about, uh, why we're here and anything about this year's approach that might be different and, uh, thoughts you have on that.
I, I appreciate again those comments and also appreciate everyone's time. We want to be very cognizant of that and efficient with it. Uh, we did recognize that this year is kind of a transition time in the city in terms of staff and also four new council members. We're, we're very interested in making some improvements. So I asked the question internally, well, how can we do it better than we have in the past? And so this was kind of one of the initial ideas was let's start, uh, with a, with a better foundation maybe as we proceed. And so what our goal here tonight is to do some technical things, talk about, uh, some things that Sheila has for you all in terms of process and how the process will work. And then we're going to move a little bit more into some of the issues or initiatives or topics. So that's, that's kind of the general framework. And, uh, you know, I would prefer it to be at your discretion, of course, as council, a pleasure, but a little more of an open dialogue with, with us. We'll do our best to answer questions and if we don't have ones to answer, we do. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hand it off to Sheila.
Great, Mr. Perry.
I passed out prior to the proposed budget schedule for FY twenty-four. And we do want to talk about a couple of things that we have scheduled differently here after talking with Councilman Hensley and Mayor Fitzwater. We are actually proposing that some of our very first meetings that we have are done as brown bags from noon to one here in the council chambers. What we have scheduled would be the meeting that is there for Thursday, August tenth, which would be the very first meeting we typically do with budget highlights, a discussion of the revenues and a five-year financial plan. And then also the next three meetings that are on the schedule for August fourteenth, seventeenth and forty-fourth. Those would be the department presentations that are usually made. Uh, we've only got one hour set aside for that right over the lunchtime. We thought it might be an attempt to try something different, to not have so many after-hours meetings, but still accomplish the same things that we have in our normal meetings. And so at this point, we're really, uh, looking for feedback on if anyone is, is opposed to that particular idea. Other than that, the rest of the budget calendar before you is set up in the same manner that it has been in the past with evening meetings, uh, from five-thirty to seven here in the council chambers. And it's really just about the same schedule that we have followed in the past.
And I think part of the thought also was that this might have some positive impact on public engagement. Having the, having the meeting in the middle of the day.
In the past, this has happened, but it has been many, many years ago. We've actually had some responses that I think they used to get more public input and more feedback and more people present when it happened during the lunch hour as opposed to when it happened after hours. So we thought we'd try something new if there isn't any strong opposition to this.
We also. If I might add too, we, we thought it might be an opportunity for more senior staff inside the city to participate in those, not just the department directors typically come to the meetings. And then they could even be working on some of their requests as they come up during that, that same workday. We could get some of those answers back to council.
One question.
Yes, so this may be an obvious question, but so one of these days I already have a trial scheduled out of county. Will these be, uh, available on Microsoft Teams for us to attend that way?
They'll be just like the meetings we would typically have, uh, for council meetings or evening budget meetings. They will be available for joining, um, virtually or here in the council chambers. We're hoping to have some attendance as well.
Follow-up question, if for some reason that trial just goes over and is crazy, will it be saved so I can later watch it on the YouTube channel? I know we've had that ability in the past.
We can't do that. It's not something we discussed, but we do save these council meetings. So I would anticipate that it would be the same thing. We'd save them on YouTube.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Spencer?
Yes, um, as far as the, the change in concept and, and schedule, I have no, uh, issues with that. It does, uh, kind of bring us to a point though, uh, of, uh, being pressed for time, uh, related to utilize our subcommittees, uh, to kind of help, um, drive the needs of, of the budget for those departments, whether it's public works for, uh, for the public works and planning committee and then public safety for police and fire, public safety, to completely utilize those structures because you have half the council there. So it's already kind of, well, recapturing a certain segment of those, of the council body, um, to help kind of formulate those priorities and, and kind of, you know, support that. Again, I think it could streamline that process as well. Uh, that way there's kind of no surprises, uh, once, you know, maybe some budget, uh, items were introduced.
One of the other things that we talked about was having these meetings as a brown bag at lunchtime. Also then could help us with those subcommittee meetings because you know that during the budget time, finance committee, for example, we have a tendency to cancel to cancel so that we're not here early and late on the same nights. So we're hoping it could kind of be a business as usual and allow those subcommittees to continue through the budget time where in the past we've canceled those because of scheduling conflicts.
Any other comments or questions about, uh, this particular change? Any objections? Okay, let's keep it in there as, as it is then.
The other thing that we wanted to inquire about is the budget information that's provided to you from both finance and the departments. So the document that you receive is an extensively large document. Uh, I know that in the past that there have been things in there that some may not find useful or there have been things that maybe have been requested of us that we've not provided in the past. So I'm really looking for some feedback on what you would like to have in your budget document. If it's not useful, let's not waste staff time producing it. Let's give you something that would be useful to help you proceed through this process. And then at the same time, when department directors make their presentations, what kind of presentations are you expecting as a group? I know that in the last few years, we have kind of reduced those presentations. Are there specific things that you want department directors to talk about, specific things that you'd like department directors to go over? That's really the feedback that we're looking for at this point.
Are there items in the standard or the current standard budget books that staff have deemed, uh, in your minds unnecessary or redundant?
I'll take one of those in this, in this process. We used to have a specific list of performance measures. And that was a priority, uh, early on in my tenure as a department director. What we've asked staff to do this year is to, to kind of give that a fresh look and tell us what is actually relevant benchmarks for them and that they would want to make sure. And that, that might include things that are added and also things that are taken away. So, you know, in terms of the, the, the number of things may change a little bit, uh, but we think that we're trying to refine that so that they are actually things that department director, uh, feels are more relevant. So, so that is like one, one example of a change, you know? And then there were some stated goals that had been recycled year to year, really hadn't changed much. So we felt like it was, um, it was helpful for the departments to kind of refresh that and maybe simplify and consolidate it a little bit, uh, to streamline. So you'll see that as a little bit of a change, the information is provided.
Yeah, just on your, you know, just looking sort of the digital binder versus a printed paper copy. I mean, I think that's just a matter of preference. I assume staff is, uh, capable of still producing those binders in both ways. So it's just sort of up to each person's, uh, preference there. Any other thoughts or questions, particular items, um, related to what goes into or what maybe should be left out of, uh, this budget document that we're presented with?
And once we leave this meeting, if there is something that you go back and look at the old documents and, and come across that's either not useful or it is and you would like to continue to save by all means, you can email me that information.
And we're not talking about the, the meat of the budget proposals. We're not talking about the departmental revenue and expenditure spreadsheets or the new, um, um, new item requests or anything like that. This is sort of the additional contextual material related to each department and its performance and its staff that, uh, that we're provided with to accompany each, each departmental budget request.
It would be what we refer to as the extras, the performance measures. As Chief brought up, we're going to try and produce some benchmarks that department directors feel are, are more of a gauge in their area. Uh, we would still produce the pink sheets, uh, that have come through departments, which we're going to talk a little bit about in just a minute. Uh, you'd still get a line-by-line breakdown of every account because again, as staff, we're not doing our due diligence if we don't provide you all of that information to, to do the job that you're tasked with. So these are really, the goals and objectives, I think, have been at the beginning of, of each of the different sections. There have been some pie charts. I, I, I don't know which of those things are useful, so that's kind of what we're talking about.
I have to go like.
One thing that I think is somewhat a little bit frustrating is, um, not having, um, the cost, uh, whether it be, um, self-funded insurance, work is comp, those figures upfront during our budget process. Because those really, those numbers need to be taken into consideration from the get-go of our budget process and not done somewhat after the fact. And that's kind of what I felt like in some ways at this point. And, um, a little frustrating as well because, you know, we're trying to, when some of us on the council really want to focus on having that seventeen percent in the, in the reserve fund balance, then we thought we got there. And then we had those appropriations come forward pretty early in the budget cycle that were below that. So it's, we took a lot of effort to get us to that point and then it kind of deflated us once we got those figures. So I think we need to have those kind of upfront center would be my encouragement there.
Okay, Councilman.
Thank you. I, I've appreciated staff and their abbreviated over the years, just getting more succinct with their presentations. And I, it looks like this year they're going to even be more succinct. But I think that staff has done an increasingly better job of giving us the really good highlights of what's going on. And I, I really look forward to that this year. I mean, especially in each of their departments, I'm going to, um, point over here to Matt because I know that, you know, he has a lot of, uh, smaller departments that we don't think about, like airport, you know, sometimes. And so I, I really have appreciated that over the years and I look forward again to even more succinct discussion of those topics.
You have a comment? So I would just ask then that if, uh, staff identifies things that they think, uh, might be worth removing or may no longer be of use, to please let us know in like ways for council. If there are things that, uh, you would prefer to see changed, uh, one way or the other, uh, in the budget document, let's share through the budget committee, uh, on to staff. Councilman Ollers?
For being new on the, the committee and all that, is, so Sheila, I ask you, is the packet you were talking about, the, the, the one download? I got sixty-one pages on it. Is that what? So that's, I like minutia. I, I like, what I'm forgetting is I like minutia. I like line-by-line stuff, other than part of pie charts. I'm sorry. But, um, but I would like to see this year, can I get a look at it, just to see what this year, so what it looks like? So I know what, because you're saying there's some things we could need to get rid of. Well, I don't have a clue.
I didn't know that there are things we need to get rid of, but the, the, the full doc, document is usually over about four hundred pages.
I can send, uh, a link to last year's budget document so that you could.
Now we had to look through it.
Yes.
I didn't see, I didn't see pie charts being such a flashpoint, but.
Makes me hungry looking at it.
Going to have to work their way through this, I guess. Uh, Councilman Oleski?
So I think, uh, one change, uh, last year we experienced is, is with inflation, we've learned a lot. I guess I'd be interested in knowing, uh, what areas of the budget seem to have been, uh, more stressed by inflation. I don't know, but I know it's not going to even across everybody.
I expect a report by the next meeting of what you found.
I hear her very clearly.
It's just because I'm being snarky.
You asked for it. Any other comments or questions on this point?
Last thing we would like to ask is staff is that if there is something that you have that you're going to want to discuss during a specific budget meeting, if you could let us know that in advance, we'll try and come prepared to the meeting so that we're not delaying it and also in turn delaying the process.
Great point. Okay, any comments, questions related to what we could talk about the last few minutes? Chief Schofield, um, would you walk us through a discussion on, uh, departmental pink sheet scoring, please?
Be happy to, and probably a little disclaimer for those that maybe are not as familiar with the process. So each year, uh, each department is tasked with identifying some of the bigger ticket items, uh, that, that they would request. And so, um, we are told it is the thing of legend and lore that they used to be on pink paper. And so predates my time, but, um, apparently that became known as the pink sheet request process. And so, uh, because they were on pink paper and it's some kind of duplicate trip to the thing, I guess, uh, they were forever known as the pink sheets. And so that could, um, that could incorporate many things, but it's a, it's a request for funding for something or someone. It could be staff request. For example, I probably have fourteen pink sheets for the fire department this year. Some of those are additional staffing, some of those are equipment, some of those are facilities, some of those might be, um, initiatives. But, but either way, it's a, it's a detailed request that talks about the justification for the item. It talks about what was the different costs associated with that item. And then maybe the history of the request. So those sheets are collected by finance from the department director and then put into a big master list of pink sheets. And so in the historical context, we've, we've made an eleven-by-seventeen printout with all the different items kind of broken out by category. Personnel, uh, vehicles, uh, equipment, things like that. And usually we even break it out a little bit further depending on whether or not it's, uh, enterprise fund or it's a general fund, it's budget. And so typically the city administrator would work with the mayor to recommend a few of those items for approval or for funding. And, um, then there's all these other things that are kind of left on the list to language. Typically, that is sometimes the things that the city council will then pick up and identify and say that I want to fund this, um, this item or initiative or staff position or whatever. And so then we put that on the parking lot and then we would go through this process here and these budget meetings to talk about how those things might be funded. And so our proposal is, is twofold. Initially, you know, we're going through that process right now and reviewing department request from each department. We're about three quarters of the way halfway through that. Sheila and I are sitting down with all the department directors, talking about their line items, talking about the benchmarks, talking about, um, the pink sheet list. And so as we review those, we kind of scrutinize, scrutinize those internally just with us. And then they would eventually end up on this list. Well, what we've decided to do this year is later on this week, after we do all the department, you know, meetings with the city administrator is we're going to get everybody and we're going to lock them all in a room and we're going to, um, sort through these lists of pink sheet requests. And we're going to score them and go through an internal scoring process to give you a little bit more than just a priority by department. And we don't really have it figured out a hundred percent how it's going to work yet, but, you know, we're going to talk about the cost. We're going to talk about the urgency. We're going to talk about internal impact, external impact. If there's opportunistic advantages to doing it versus later, meaning that it might be beneficial to incorporate it into an existing project or an ongoing project, uh, just from a planning perspective. Because it identified as something that's already in a planning document that has already had the public in approval. But we know that that's a multi-dimensional thing by nature. And we're going to try to build some consensus amongst the department directors and city leadership to score that for you so that you have a little more than just the fire department ranks as its number one on their list. That is a little bit more broad-based and, uh, community-oriented. So it's the first time we've tried that. Gosh, I'm not sure how that's going to go. May not make it very popular with my fellow department directors, but we're going to give it a shot. So, um, we're going to lock ourselves in a room and try to accomplish something. So that's the first part of, of the pink sheet process that we're going to change a little bit or we propose changing internally. The next part of it is, you know, we, we kind of feel like there are things we want to break out from that, that, that pink sheet organizational criteria. You know, in the past, we always said there's the parking. Parking lot's always been the place where we consider items and the council puts things on the parking lot and then tries to find ways to fund it. And then ultimately votes on whether or not, um, they get moved on and incorporated into the budget. We're kind of proposing maybe three different criteria, three different places in the process. There's the traditional parking lot, regular parking, we call it. Then there's maybe long-term overflow parking. That is a bigger project for whatever reason, we can't fund it this year, but it really needs to stay on the radar, kind of on the back burner, on the list of important priorities that needs to carry over into the next year so that we don't forget about it. It's an important initiative. We just can't fund it. And then maybe there are also things that are, because of their nature, those multi-dimensional issues, maybe they're in the loading zone. They are critical by nature. So we would propose kind of thinking about the parking lot maybe a little bit differently in that way. We also think that's important for future planning processes to have those things identified as your priorities and ours, um, to capture them and maybe have a continuing conversation in future years. Not exactly sure how that's going to work yet, uh, but that's kind of the general idea of how we might propose to change the pink sheet process. I see a lot of confused faces. I'm sure you have questions.
Well, uh, I mean, just as a general rule, I'm usually open to trying new things if they seem reasonably designed to improve how we've been doing things. And I think this is a good idea and not just because I love torturing metaphors. But, uh, it makes, it makes total sense because, I mean, for those of us who, for whom this will be their first budget process, the parking lot is really just an Excel spreadsheet of potential sources and uses, uh, that have not yet made their way into the proposed budget. But yeah, being able to categorize them or, or rate them, especially following sort of this, already this, uh, consensus scoring that's going in on the, that would be going in on the front end by department staff. I, I think that this layer approach, um, makes all the sense in the world. Councilman Oleski?
So I'm going to make this even more difficult. Some years we have been very unpopular in our opinions from where we take, take money. We've taken money from, uh, places that have really needed it. Are you going to have also suggested sources for some of these parking lot items that you guys get in your room and talk about what number one is? And I say that because, I mean, we, we've taken away employees and made departments upset. And, I mean, that's part of being the elected official. It's just in numbering and taking that into consideration, what's most urgent. Are we also taking into consideration maybe where can give the most? I don't know if you can do that or not, but.
We had a lot of discussions about that, trying to figure out a way to make it more surgical. If, if the, if the priority is to find a way to fund it and I, is there a way that we can make a recommendation for that? That cut to be a surgical cut versus a shed. I think I, I would like to find a way to, I don't know what that looks like. Probably involves working with the departments that are impacted directly.
Sure.
Councilman Schwartz?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I, I not only think it's a good idea, I think it's absolutely essential, uh, that these rankings take place, uh, from my perspective because it's impossible for any of us to know, um, what the main priority for a specific department or division might be. So I think, I think that ranking system will be very well received, especially once we get it to where it works and, and everybody's happy with it. When it comes to the parking lot, if I want to put something on it, do I, do I have to have a funding source for that? And if not, I guess my question would be why and should we, is should that be something that? I.
So.
Coming from that other building, if you bring up an amendment to a budget. Coming from that other building, if you bring up an amendment to a budget, you have to have a funding source with it. Which precludes people from saying, well, I want to fund X and I'm going to put it on the parking lot and I'm going to take credit for it. And if the rest of everybody votes no on it, well, at least I did my job. But that's not really, you're not really doing your job at that point. I think if you want to fund something, you should be required to at least work with staff to try to find a funding source for that, so.
And that's historically how it has, has been. You know, what will happen is a member of the committee will propose an adjustment to, to spend it, you know, putting something new up there. And they have until the end of the next meeting to come up with a source to match with it. And then vote on the source and the use together to have it adopted by the committee. And if that doesn't happen by the end of the next meeting, it dies at least momentarily. They can bring it up again in the future if they've, if they've found a new way to, to make it work. But no, it doesn't just get to ride on there throughout the rest of the process. You know, it's, it's, these are, these are short shelf lives for these items. Would staff like to add anything to that?
So, so one piece of value that I see to the long-term parking. Sometimes it's hard to discern what things are rejected and which things are simply not funded. And so when we talk about future planning, that type of information can be helpful. You know, sometimes there's ideas that just, no, we don't want to do that, we don't agree with that. As opposed to, we all think that's a great idea, we just can't do it this year. So I'm personally hoping that there can be some discernment on those types of items. Because the last thing we want to do is bring something to you to have it rejected back, you know, in the future. Without, you know, just because of ignorance or lack of what the direction was. So that's kind of one thing that I'm looking at, looking forward to in the long-term projects come over like this.
Councilman Spencer. So the exercise here, just referencing about pink sheets and parking lot. Is the mayor going to be part of that discussion phase of when you all bring those proposals, those needs and the scoring exercise? You know, certainly is, I'd love to have, to be part of it. I would tell you that he's already kind of given us some general guidance, some leaders intent. So we're already kind of formulating some plans about how we can incorporate those things. If it's possible, I would almost like to have some of those discussions, initial discussions very early here to socialize some of those ideas. And depending on the feedback, we would try to incorporate those things. Again, as preloaded into the parking lot, maybe in places. Sure. And depending on the timeline, again, because it's kind of false depending on the timeline. If there was an opportunity, I don't know when you were planning on going through this exercise, but if there was an opportunity for playing public works and public safety and, you know, to have a meeting to where, you know, Matt could share some of those, those requests. And then again, you're capturing half the council already there. They could have their, maybe some, some comments or suggestions to help along with that possibly. I'm just, I'm just, you know, saying, you know, trying to use these sub community structures appropriately that we haven't used in the past. You know, we've had kind of a disjointed, a mayor proposed budget. And, you know, if we can align that from, from the shoot, so to speak, from the get-go, I think it will streamline this whole process.
You don't disagree? We agree and hopefully that'll be one of the positive outcomes of starting the process the way we are today. Councilman Mealy.
Were the department directors involved in the process change discussion?
Yeah, we've had a ranking, sorry. Oh, sorry. We've, we've had a couple of different conversations at our staff meetings, typically happened following a council meeting, two different meetings. And in those conversations, we were fortunate to have the mayor attend one and we talked about, you know, some of the broad initiatives and he's been talking about that. Subsequently, talked about, you know, how we might do things a little different this year. It's a combination of probably lots of informal conversations kind of accumulating into, into this.
So did you ask department directors for feedback on that process change?
So, yeah, I think it's been, it's been kind of an ongoing conversation. I think what we all agreed on was that, you know, the process could, could use some refreshing. It could be adjusted to try to make it a little bit more, less painful, I think is probably just the easiest way to say it, and it has been.
And also I think more informative than it has been in the past because getting an eleven by seventeen sheet that has no real rhyme or reason as an organization-wide prioritization. It's just the listing. And, you know, again, we have that based on individual departments, but we don't have anything citywide as an organization. So we're hoping to at least make it a little more informative and useful.
Councilman Ollers.
Just kind of a, maybe a dumb question, but are there things on the, in the parking lot this year yet that we, hasn't been brought up to us that, as we're winding down this budget year? That we may be brought up to, that we need to look at and say, you know, is it, or is that process already taking place? And for lack of a better thing, it's, they're still in the parking lot or maybe rolled over to something else.
Historically, that has been the kind of the first formal budget meeting after revenues are discussed and after the department presentations. Then they kind of officially open up the parking lot session, season from the chair at that time. So from last year, because it requires a vote for it to be formally adopted off of the parking lot into the budget, anything that was discussed last year, it just kind of fell off. And I think that's what we're trying to maybe capture better this year is maybe, and maybe that requires a vote to go on to the long-term. If that makes any sense, because then you're officially endorsing it, you're just saying we don't have a way to fund it yet.
And that's what I was wanting to get to about the long-term parking, then these seem like a great idea, maybe we have a funding song. Is that saying that when we brought up maybe again from a department director standpoint, that we will revisit and look at again from, let's say, Matt, Plainer, whoever.
I would tell you from a department director perspective, the pink sheet items are that list for us. So anything that, like for me, you know, that didn't get funded in previous years rolls onto the pink sheet list, typically for the following year, along with anything new that's come up during that time. So, so that de facto, I would say that the department itself maintains that, that historical list of requests if it doesn't get funded. But I think what it allows us to do is get formal council support for an item, which gives it a little more credibility in terms of the long-term planning piece.
Yeah, so the, the parking lot approach is really just a tool that we use during this process of getting to next year's final budget. Going from the mayor's proposed budget to the final council approved budget. But I, I think some information through this new approach could be helpful in that if something gets put on this long-term priorities list, but it doesn't make it into a budget. Then in next year's, on next year's pink sheet, there could certainly be a line that says, identified as a priority but not funded last year. Or, you know, since 2019 or, you know, whatever. So I think there's, there's good future use potential for doing it this way. But no, there's, there's not, there's not a running sort of parking lot list throughout the course of the year. But I suppose the courses we have to that is simply the ability to supplementally appropriate dollars always throughout the course of the year for items that mayor may not have been requested. But weren't funded for one reason or another, but have become sort of a deep critical need throughout the course of a budget.
But from somebody that we came in in April and the budget starts in October or whatever we thought. So coming in right in the middle is like, for me, it's like, okay, we have questions, everything we look at here. You know, you know, I hate to bother everybody about, okay, I got a question on this. I know I asked a lot of questions, but you know, from my information, are we in the middle of stuff? Or, you know, where do we have, where do those all come about? That would be my last question today, Mark.
Last year's paint sheets will also be in the document that I sent the link for or in that big book you've got right there in front of you. So those can be reviewed as well to know if they were on last year's and are still on this year's.
I appreciate that.
Any other comments from the committee on what Chief Schofield just described in terms of process? Any final comments on that?
Not on that topic.
Okay. Chief, next thing on your list.
Yeah, so what we hope to do tonight was, you know, have this kind of launch kickoff meeting. We felt like the place to start with that. With our mayor and so we were fortunate enough to have him come to a staff meeting a week or so ago and took those and had a chance to collaborate with the staff. And so if it's at the pleasure of the chairman, I'd like to hand it over to the mayor and let him kind of summarize his five five words.
Please.
Welcome Mayor Fitzwater, thank you for being here.
Thanks. Well, first, thank you to everybody. Hopefully you're proceeding, we're trying to make the culture change in this organization, we call the City of Jefferson. It's going to take a while, I hope it's not like turning a battleship. Definitely not going to be like turning a speedboat, but hopefully we can change the way we take a look at things. And it's, and my impression in coming into this is it's, if you don't know where you're going, if we don't know where we're going as a city, anything we do is going to get us there because we don't know where there is when, when we finish. So we've got to put some strategy around and, you know, I've kind of talked over the last few months and certainly since I've been on this position. Trying to focus on something that the community can gather around and steal from Councilman Spencer, raise to fifty or, you know, goal fifty. Trying to get this community to fifty thousand as a goal for the city, but to do it right. I mean, I know we could grow, but if we don't grow appropriately, because as, as I was meeting with the department directors, as we grow. I mean, that puts an impact on our fire department, our police department, our city services. So we want to make sure that we grow appropriately. But if we can get this model and we bounce it off from a few people reading into this discussion saying, is there a better way than that more painful process we had last year? I know you'll at some point get a document called the mayor's budget, but if we can get more input into what that should look like from your perspective. I think it gives us the ability to start focusing on some of our critical needs in the community and trying to prioritize. We can't do everything, we don't have enough dollars to do everything. And if we can all agree on what are the goals to get us to where we want to be. So the strategy I'm asking you to start thinking about is taking it from a chess game to a three-dimensional chess game. Where moves that we make today may impact moves two or three years down the line. And if we know where we're going, I mean, I think that makes it easier to do the types of things Chief was talking about. Yeah, I've got my priority item on the parking lot, but if I see where this city's going and I can pull mine back, but I know next year, we're going to be looking at it. But again, it's going to take the buy-ins. And I just appreciate you, you trying to take a look at it. I don't have all the answers, but I think we've got some real smart people in this room that can help us get there and can help us change the culture, work on behalf of the, of the community. So thanks to that, and I'll try to get through them very quickly. Obviously, public safety, I've convinced more than ever that if we don't continue to focus on that, some of the other things that we're looking at. Last, last week, and I'll pick on Columbia last week, we heard about a shooting north side of Columbia. This morning is another altercation on the south side of Columbia. People in this community expect to be safe and, you know, there's all around us models of things that don't work. So and our council has been, and our community has been with the passage of the public safety tags, saying that, that we want to make sure that, that we are focusing on that area. So I always put that at the top. Second is infrastructure and privilege to chair the, the public works committee over the last couple of years. That was probably the hardest thing to give up in taking, taking the mayor's position because I really love public works. So infrastructure, maintenance, you know, of our roads. I appreciate council putting additional dollars into our overlay, but continuing to look at opportunities. And Chairman Spencer has some ideas on a way we can, ways that maybe we can multiply our dollars and make that more effective. But maintenance of our roads, development, looking at ways we can appropriately expand the city. We're looking at that and I think next Monday you'll see the, the final on some annexation opportunities where it's a two-way partnership. Where we're not going in and trying to take over, but we've got voluntary people saying, if you will come to our property, we'll work with the city. So looking at ways that through development, we can expand the city. Looking at our redevelopment opportunities, you know, continue to talk about opportunities at MSP and dollars that we're going to invest there that will move this city forward. And we put money into the buy-in duck and continue to have discussions on that. Vermont, I got hit on that project again over the weekend, what you got to do with that project. So, I mean, we know that we've got to address what the city looks like in the presentation and then assignments of project. And I know that there have been continuous discussions. So looking at appropriate redevelopment in this community that makes sense and again, moving us forward on that, that goal to fifty. Housing under infrastructure, I, as I talked to groups, probably picked up on the fact I'm a limited government type person. I know there's a role for government in housing. I think in my mind, it's creating the pathway so that development will come in here and assist us. But we can't get to fifty unless we have places to put people. So we have got to keep those discussions in the mix and where we can appropriately utilize city government and our resources to, to move in that area. Certainly housing, whether it's infill, you know, looking at some opportunities. Had a meeting last week that Travis set me up with, with individuals that can come in and do some creative things. So I think there's just a lot of opportunities out there if we're open to it. Transit is another area that we've got to focus on, the dry cleaners on the way here again. Input from the, the young lady that works in there on our scooters. I mean, this is a young lady that has no vehicle, has no car. She said, I ride scooter to work, I ride scooter to home. So, I mean, looking at how we move people around this city and, you know, not labbing you on that issue, council will deal with that. And I've told the press that I'll support whatever decision you do on that. But I'm just using that as an example of how we move people around the city and as we grow. I mean, we have got to take a look at the money that we're investing there, are we doing it in an appropriate fashion? And then the airport, the airport, small in our budget, but it is a critical piece in this community. It's an entryway for a lot of very important individuals that come through our community and it's just a priority to me. I don't think we continue to grow this city without continued investment there. Economic development, you know, tried as I've talked to people that we want to present the message that we're open for business. So we've had some preliminary discussions as I've met with the directors on, could we do a work session on our zoning process, our permitting processes, code enforcement? So that we're better educated as council members, as a mayor, and what those processes are like. Quality of life, every presentation I get, I talk about parks. And the chamber did a marketing study and one of the top three things people said, they want housing, they want childcare, they want to get park systems. So we know we've got to continue to work, try to pull the, the groups together and continue that investment. But if we're going to grow the city, if we're going to reach the goals that we want to be, we know we've got to have a park system. And I know we have challenges, I know Councilman Lester's been dealing with, with an issue. We're going to have those, those issues. We're gonna have those, those issues, but, you know, I think we as a city have got to continue to focus on that. If we're gonna get to where hopefully we have the opportunity to be. And then our human capital, I think the council made some good investments last year in trying to push dollars and raise salaries and solidify our, our city staff and some of the things that we're doing here. But it's very clear that we're not gonna be able to get to where we need to be if we don't have good leadership in this building and the police department next door and the fire department and all across the city where we have city staff. So that investment, and I know we can't keep up with the capital. We've got to do what we can within our abilities, but we can't overlook that, that either. And then the final is communication and how we tell our story to the community. So I'll talk about a couple ways and I think Chief is gonna talk or maybe the, the chair. One of the things I would like to propose in working in the budget is to get back to, or the day when we had a communications director internally as a part of staff. I think if we're gonna do the types of things that we need to do, we need to have someone out there on an assistant basis. Working with our department directors, what's going on in Public Works, what's going on in police and fire. And I know that David Williams does an amazing job in responding to things that happen. I'm not trying to replace what's there. I'm trying to say we've got the ability to enhance citywide, making sure that we're getting a consistent message out to the community. So I've asked the, the staff to at least, pending our discussion tonight, you know, if you're willing to at least look for, look to what the numbers would be if we were to incorporate that. And then the second piece that I think we'll, we'll discuss also is, are there tweaks and changes we need to make in our current director positions and the way that the interaction? I mean, I fight it all the time for Councilman Ford, shows the capital silo mentality of, you know, protecting my feet down. And, you know, we're not gonna talk silo to silo. Yeah, I think they've, they've done a very good job and I appreciate the chief's talking about, you know, just the, the pink sheet. But we've got some opportunities in our city if we can create ways to utilize that more efficiently. So I think there's gonna be some discussions on, maybe some changes there to not take away from someone, but hopefully to enhance what we're doing as a city. Again, I appreciate, you know, I know that we're proposing a lot of changes in process. Hopefully we're gonna come out with a product that's much better. Again, I, I appreciate their willingness to invite me to, to meet with them, to take some of these ideas. And again, I think we as a group have got such priorities. I'm just laying out the types of things that I've talked about. This is our city. We need to figure out what we as a group want it to be. And then hopefully create a budget that helps us start moving in that direction. So I'll turn it back to you, Chair, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you very much for those comments. I've joined you wholeheartedly in your listing of priorities. At the beginning of your comments, you know, with respect to the, the two, the, the one potential new FTE and the current positions, welcome that conversation. And at the very least, I think going through that sort of exercise and examining the usefulness of that role will help us set ourselves in a good direction. And I also think that following through and as we're finding funding for that type of position for an organization this size is, should be an important priority. And that any organization of this size should also constantly be looking at whether it is composed and organized in the, the most productive and effective way. So those are just my immediate responses to your presentation there. Comments, questions on Mayor Fitzwater's remarks? Seeing that, that's me. It was good.
Absolutely.
Very effective. Chief, any other comments on the evening so far?
Yeah, what I'd like, just follow up on, on two, I'll call them preloaded pink sheet items that the, that the mayor has kind of introduced to us. And just, just to make sure that we have some consensus among this group and we know what our marching orders are and what maybe those deliverables might look like. So, you know, the, the one would be a new FTE with the communications coordinator, for lack of a better term. We can always change that term later, but that would be somebody who would, who would be primarily tasked with assisting the, the city as a whole, including council and the referees department with their messaging, community engagement, and information flow back and forth amongst all stakeholders. So I, I do know that, you know, something that came up in our staff meeting, which I thought was, was a really interesting possibility for collaboration. We talked with Director of Parks and Rec, and I know he's here tonight, but he mentioned that, you know, that this is something that they do very well. And certainly they have people that are assigned this task. And so at a minimum, we might lean on their recommendations about how that position would be written, job description wise, and maybe even exploring some collaborations with that position. So, so that's, that's just, I want to make sure that I have it correct. And if, if that's not correct, please tell me what, what the desire is to bring back to council as part of this budget on that first one.
Communications director will fall under, who's maybe heard you on what the, how the message is shaped for the citizens and all?
It's a good question and I, I think there's some different options there. I would imagine that it could fall under the city administrator and report directly to the city administrator. That, we did have this position before and we look back at the documents and I think it, last time we saw it listed was 2012. It was short-lived at the time and it didn't, you know, ended up not being a long-standing role within the city. But it is something that we've attempted before. So we just want to make sure that we get, we get the foundation right from you before we proceed and make sure that that is indeed something you want us to explore.
Thank you. That's what Spencer.
And from a, probably from a historical context, that position was mainly eliminated due to the financial crisis that we entered into during that time. So it really wasn't by choice to eliminate that position. It was by necessity at the time. So, yeah, if anybody had any concern, questions or concerns on why it was eliminated in the first place, that, that's, that was the reason.
There was certainly a budget crisis at the time coinciding with that.
And obviously probably the social media president, they, they would be in charge of social media platforms. I'm sure they would probably confirm with our legal department to make sure. But that would be the point person to make that directors or council would go and say, why was this communicated this way? Or, or something like that. Because in the past, some of those social media presences have been kind of hodgepodge and hasn't been, you know, formed.
I think we all acknowledge we can do it better. We do it more, we want to do it better.
Any other comments, questions from the committee? Councilman Miele?
Mayor Fitzwater, I appreciate your priorities. In looking at them, one of the things is pursuit of grant funds. And I know in past years, we've eliminated some planner positions, potentially out of necessity. But I know a lot of times those planner positions are the folks that are writing the grants and getting that money. So I'm just hopeful that we can get some of those positions back to do that work that's outlined here. I know this is this budget kickoff, but I, one thing that's really important to me, I know that public safety have unions and that other staff don't. And I think oftentimes that, I, I think about that and I think about what the state did and what we want state to remain competitive. So I'm happy to see that is your priority, that, you know, hopefully we can, you know, these, these folks are the folks who work on our roads and, you know, keep our day-to-day lives going. You know, I certainly appreciate that and I hope we can show that to, to them through their salary. Thank you for your priorities.
That's good. All right, sorry. Just go.
And if I could, on the second position, we've talked about it, really, when I talk about the second FTE, what we're really talking about is a realignment or a reorganization. And what's been discussed by the mayor and others is that we try to centralize how we seek grants and how we administer grants and bringing that more in one umbrella that would transcend the different silos that we've talked about. And so the challenge with that is that that's a pretty substantial change. It would require existing staff be reassigned and, and roles and responsibilities we need to shift potentially. It would also need a, you know, a new job description or an expanded job description, probably more apt. And so there's costs associated with those things and in some cases, there's just basic organizational structure changes that would be pretty substantial. So, so that was the other one that, you know, that we've discussed. And again, before we brought something back to you as an option or proposal or recommendation, we just wanted to make sure that we had that, that charge correct or that, that tasking, we're in alignment with what that tasking was. So that would be the other thing that we want to talk with you about.
Comments, concerns, objections on that point? That's what Spencer.
And I, I totally agree. I think this city has benefited from the aggressiveness Rachel Sincin and others, finding money for development or sort of projects that are, that I think benefit funding through that availability. And I just would like to remind the council that there is a organizational review committee that has done a lot of work. And I would kind of like to let that strength kind of be run out for them to do, finish their work. But I would not be opposed to, to setting aside funding. I think it would just be appropriate for that organizational review committee process to take place to, to possibly allow some of those suggestions to take place before we commit ourselves to an organizational, you know, structure change. So maybe, you know, it may lay full implementation, but it would probably be more effective, if you will. So. I, I, I think if we, if we knew there was a cost associated to it, I think that's what this council would really need to know immediately. And maybe, you know, kind of a, a rough idea or suggestion of what that structure change might, might look like.
All right, Councilman Oles.
I was just questioning, Councilman Spencer, do you know if that committee is done with, I think it was like, I don't want to put the name of it, like Penny Quigg and Mike Bates and all that, do you know if they're done with that? And are they preparing a, a presentation to us? Or a presentation maybe to the mayor and everybody?
Last week, they've already made, they made a recommendation of the vendor, what they recommended to buy that review. That will be coming to council, I believe, on the, on the next agenda. So it's in short form, but that will take place.
And they will be, whoever the chair of that group was, maybe give us a, a presentation at the next council.
Yes.
We're a close council meeting coming up.
Yes, that was, that was in. Okay, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up.
Are there any, are any committee objections to Chief Schofield, the mayor, staff generally continuing to flesh out, pursue these listed topics for further future presentation on down the line in this process? Got it. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much. That was a very thorough, very detailed, I think very valuable overall presentation of all those topics. Appreciate it. We'll open it up now to input, feedback, comments generally from the committee on what we've discussed, on other topics related to the budget. We have about twenty-five minutes left of our scheduled time to sit. So let's open this floor. Councilman Oles.
Thank you. I know Ron just loves this. Just a couple of things I was, what I give my counterpart, Jack Deacon, on is priorities for like the first ward, sitting down and coming up with, you know, maybe priorities that we see as street-wise that need to be done for the following budget year and coming up with that. Do the council, I guess this is a question for you and everyone else being new to this, do the representatives of each ward submit something to the budget committee or the city or the mayor and say, here's the priorities in the first ward that people ask us about to look at. Here's what we would like to see and incorporate that and then have the discussion on. And basically, it's, it, in the first word, basically comes down to the street, maybe, honestly. And like that, so if I have, you know, all the streets, I've only got three or four streets that I know that are probably really bad. And then just being able to sit down and say, you know, maybe the parking lot, figure out where that is in the parking lot or however that goes about, is that something that's been done before?
Mr. Warris?
Chair.
Mr. Warris, would you like to give us just a brief overview of how road maintenance is sort of managed year to year?
Yeah, and so like overlay, which we're getting ready to have on the next council agenda, the overlay contra. So there's a certain amount of money goes into the sales tax funds for five years. That increased a little bit this last five years until more recently than if it went up by about eight hundred thousand. So it was about a one point, not quite one point four million a year. And, you know, that varies on how much mileage you can do with that, with that, based on the price of the product. And so this year, an additional one point six million was captured, about eight hundred thousand a year for the next two years to increase that. And what we look at is my, it's street mileage and we try to get around treating about thirty miles of streets based on the number of lane miles we have. Thirty lane miles of street per year is kind of a good spot that you could, the, and we try to do like a three-year lookout because the budget was increased just very recently. We haven't got those next, next year out yet to look at. We're in the process of doing that. So then internally, there's also maintenance by the staff, mainly around concrete, but concrete street maintenance. But we've also recently had a infusion of money in that program. So we maintain additional streets through, through that money as well through our contract.
What, what, in around that way, I, I noticed that the ones for this year, the first ward, it had to do with like South Lincoln, Wilcox and Huff, maybe. If I remember, there is only like three streets in there. And I really noticed that like Woodlander, Marshia, Eastland are really looking dilapidated. So my idea was to give my councilperson, Jack Deacon, and say, here, here's, here may be a, a priority list as far as streets in the first ward, looking into next year that, you know, are heavily trafficked. And, and I know probably the one on Huff going by the little Baptist church probably ties in with the water lines or whatever they've been doing on that street by the Baptist church and then plus with the, the good job that Grant Street turned out to be and all. Looking through that way, I, I kind of get that aspect of it. But I mean, I was just wondering how much that we would all get to submit, here's three things or however many things. And then we go off of that because, oh, there's Jackass again.
Yeah, we certainly take input from whomever, the council and, and citizens on that deal. But we try to, so in the, in the list itself, there's usually not enough money to go around as we would like there to be. But we try to cluster projects together a little bit. We also have two utility meetings a year with all of our various utilities, find out what they're doing. So we might have to skip a street like you just mentioned. Water County says, no, I know we got to replace that line in the next couple of years. We may just have to patch that instead of go overlay it and then have it torn, torn up later. And so there's all of that. So we try to make it a science, but it's a little bit of an art in that regard as well. So, and then we bring the list to the Public Works and Planning Committee. We try to have that three-year list, like you just said. We try to have that three-year list, like you just said. So, we're working on that three-year one right now. And just the last couple of days, I think Councilman Mealy, citizen, note about a street that he had some concern to it, so wants to look at.
Five, three, three of them, I think, that are really kind of in bad shape that I've, that I know just driving around, been going, 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 all this stuff that, you know, I would, I would think if Jack saw it too, if we drove around together, that he would say, "Maybe we can get him to, you know, can we lobby?" Or whatever we need to do to present our case to the Public Works and all that about getting, you know, at least two property streets done with, you know, and then just go from there. That's something I've noticed that I would like to see more of, and I see Jack for a minute.
Councilman Deacon, thank you for joining us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Jeff, I, I agree, but I think all of us should get together from all the wards and put our parties aside because our main streets, that's what the public sees. East Picard, East High, I mean, West High, uh, West Main Street, Madison Street, Jefferson Street, these are, everyone drives on these streets, and I think we're going to have to make a showing there, go back into the neighborhood of the past because my complaint, least that I hear is, "My goodness, guys, 60th Street Dunkin'," well, all of them, I mean, I could listen forever, but the main thoroughfare, I think we start there, they can see that we're making a showing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schwartz.
I'm changing, so just.
Well, could I, could I just respond to that? Also, then having Chair Public Works, the goal here is to try to do the budget side of it, put as much as you think is appropriate into the street overlay. Where you want to have that discussion is at the Public Works because Matt, they have a pretty sophisticated process how they go through and rank our streets, and then staff, as Matt indicated, goes through and tries to take, you know, what utility work and, you know, what streets don't make sense, then they make a recommendation to Public Works. That's where you have that discussion on. Once you, as a budget committee, say, "We agree on what that number's going to look like," then Public Works is going to determine how that's going to be allocated over the next year. So, those kind of discussions, and I think Councilman Deacon serves on Public Works. That's where you want to have that discussion. Sorry, Chair.
No, thank you very much. Councilman Schwartz.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't even know if this is the right place to bring it up, but Councilman Mealy kind of jarred my interest when he was asking about the grants and working on that. But in my extended tenure on this council of two months, I'm actually, I'm actually shocked at how much, how lack of cooperation we have with the state when it comes to appropriations and, and whether they, I guess maybe the amount of city product they use for a lack of, you know, payment on that. I mean, for instance, you know, if there's a fire at the Capitol, our city fire department's going to be responding. There's an active shooter. We all know they have their own police force, but it's not very robust, and I'm sure JCPD and Highway Patrol are going to be on the scene, but I'm sure JCPD will be there before anybody else. And so, the airport, for example, I mean, conservation, MoDOT, go on and on, the governor, public safety with the National Guard, all these things that they use that the city owns, I, what I, what I wish we had was some sort of liaison, and I know we have a lobby, an outfit that lobbies for the city, but I believe, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we asked them to help us out on the incorporation for the fire truck at the airport, they wanted more money immediately. And I, I think that's just nonsense. I mean, if we, if we have two blocks in here, a state government with a $50 billion budget who is using some of our resources, I think we should engage the state to, A, start paying for some of that, and B, we need to be more robust. If you, if you would open up House Bill 20 from last year, it's about 40 pages long, and look at the projects and that, and that. And I know we, the mayor, we've talked about the parking garage being something that we look more at the state on. I'm interested in having a discussion about our air control tower working at the state on. But I, I'm shocked that we didn't take a bigger chunk out of that apple when we had that extra money in the state. I think lobbyists are great people. Don't get me wrong, they're awesome. And, but I, I think we would be better, it would be better for us to have an in-house person liaising with the state government on a full-time basis than a contracted lobby firm, who when we ask them for a million dollars for a new fire truck, immediately comes to us and asks for more money. So, this is my two cents, it's not really a question, but it kind of piggybacks along with the Councilman Mealy's grants. I mean, we have opportunities out there that I don't think we're taking full advantage of, so.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions from the committee? We certainly don't have to use all our, any.
Well, then I move to adjourn.
Well, hold on. We got to, we have one more actual piece of business to take care of.
I tried.
And the conversation for this evening is, is reasons that, that we'll move on to that final piece of business before Councilwoman Wiseman shines, as always.
You just looked at me.
In the direction of, anyway. Okay. Any other comments, questions? No?
Oh, I've got lots of questions. I can hang up. I can run it for 15 minutes. You don't mind.
All right. Item four on the agenda is approval of the FY '24 budget calendar that was distributed at the beginning of the meeting review, that's discussed at the beginning of the meeting. And I, there were no sort of proposed amendments to what's currently written here. So, if there are known still, we would entertain a motion to approve.
I'd, I'd motion that we approve the budget outline meetings.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion about the proposed FY '24 budget schedule? So, Mr. Thompson, would you please call the rule?
Oles.
Yes.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Okay, no other business coming before the committee. Councilwoman Wiseman.
I adjourn.
I'm mostly the second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for being here tonight.